Thank you. I'd like to nominate councillor Jed Vardy, please.
The second item on the agenda is to elect the vice chair. And I would like to actually ask for a vice chair nominations. To make one myself, could I nominate Keeling? It would be nice, actually, because I sometimes need some guidance in just steering through these kinds of meetings. Third, we're going to apologies for absence. That's councillor Jackie Hodson. Gavin Ellis from Devon and Somerset Fire and Rescue Service, Adele Jones from Torbay NHS, Julian Rooster, Director of Children's and Services, Ian Luskum. Nudge Group, Chris Tidman, RDH NHS. Any more? Declarations of interest, a reminder for members to declare any interests before items discussed. Okay. So announcements for the meeting, reminder that all the meeting is to be live streamed. The chair is to remind those joining remotely to mute their microphones and turn off their camera unless speaking. All speakers are to ensure they are talking into their microphones. The chair assumes that members have read all the papers in advance of the committee. Cabinet members and officers are asked to keep their introductions to their items brief, raising only the key points to the committee. Please do not share any presentations on the screen until the item commences. So if we can now move to the minutes. That is for the chair to sign initially each page.
Can I ask everyone brings their mic forward to them when they speak because it's not being picked up on the live stream? Thank you.
Okay. So the minutes, can we agree that they are approved? Say yes. Yeah, I'll sign in a minute. Are there any items recurring requiring urgent attention? I welcome the the audience and councillor, is it councillor Bailey? I know that you wanted to ask some questions at some point. What is that associated with one of the gender items? Okay, thank you. When we come to that, I'll make sure that you are able to ask those questions. So moving on quickly, I do want to, oh, thank you for making me chairman. I really appreciate that. I will do my best to make sure that we chair this meeting in an inclusive fashion. I will also make sure that the agenda is relevant. So I'm going to make sure that those things that we need to discuss and approve are high up the agenda. Those things that we've been consulted on are also in the top mix. And those items which are purely for information, I will seek they are not not below a priority, meaning that we can read them outside the room. Because I want to give time to the fact that we will be able to deep dive onto certain subjects, understand thoroughly what they're, what the pros and cons are, look at the trade offs and be able to come to a conclusion. So I'm going to, in future, make sure that we do do that. But the first item on this agenda is the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy Process and Timeline, including who we are and what we do. Presented by Steve Brown and the director, Simon Chant of Public Health. So I hand over to you, Steve.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Steve. So what I'll do, I'll share on screen a presentation we prepared. So you would have seen the paper in your packs, which sets up the process and timeline as proposed. But this presentation just gives a little bit more kind of context and detail. So I will just bring that up on screen now. Okay, so first off, start with a bit of context around, well, both what the Joint Health Wellbeing Strategy is. But as a bit of a reminder and an introduction for new members, a little bit around what the purpose of the Health and Wellbeing Board is. And the Health and Wellbeing Board responsibilities are set out on the Devon County Council of Democracy pages. So I've got these summarized in here with some kind of key points highlighted in bold there. And I've got those kind of three core responsibilities around improving health and wellbeing outcomes and reducing inequalities. So improving outcomes, but focusing really on those inequalities and those people in our population who need support the most. It's around promoting the integration of health, social care and public health with a real focus on partnership working to achieve that. And it's about promoting that integrated health improvement approach to public health services in particular. And then beyond that, there's some key statutory responsibilities which boards have. Part of that's providing that local governance structure for health and wellbeing. But then there's some particular things that the board need to produce. First and foremost, there is assessing the needs and assets of the local population through the joint strategic needs assessment. And then from that, going on to produce the joint health and wellbeing strategy to set that strategic framework. And then also promoting joint and joined up commissioning, ensuring local commissioning plans and policies of the constituent organisations and local partners take that into account. And to receive those kind of relevant reports in areas relevant to the board and its priorities. Just quickly here as well, I've set out the current membership of the board and some of the kind of regular details there. So it is a committee of Devon County Council and it meets on that quarterly basis through the year. Some of the members of the Health and Wellbeing Board are statutory, so they're dictated by law. And that is the representation there from the pre-directors in terms of public health, adult social care, children's social care or children's services. And then also Health Watch, the Integrated Care Board and also elected membership. But beyond that, there's kind of flexibility for boards to fix their membership according to their local needs and priorities. So yeah, that's there's overview and for information. Going on to the specifics of the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy. This is all about setting out a strategy to improve the health and wellbeing of the local population, to reduce the health inequalities that are seen in the population. And to outline specific local priorities and actions. And on the right hand side there, you will see a diagram which shows how things connect up. So we have the Joint Strategic Need Assessment, which is comprised of a variety of different reports, overviews and intelligence and information to assess the current and future health and wellbeing needs to the population. The Joint Health, Health and Wellbeing Strategy then draws from that to set those priorities. And then the plans of those local organisations draw on that. And quite central to that will be the integrated care system and the integrated care strategy and joint forward plan within that, which by law must pay due diligence and take its lead from the joint health and wellbeing strategies within the area. Of course, very fresh off the page and fresh since the papers were published for this board is the NHS 10 year plan. So this came out on Thursday. So reading through that, what starts to become apparent is an enhanced role for health and wellbeing boards going forward. At that health and wellbeing board level, they're looking for neighbourhood health plans to be drawn up by local government, the NHS and its partners, under the leadership of Health and Wellbeing Board. And that's about incorporating those kinds of perspectives around public health, social care and the reformed Better Care Fund. Integrated Care Partnerships as well will be abolished and Integrated Care Boards will bring that local neighbourhood plan together under something called a Population Health Improvement Plan. And that's all about informing those commissioning decisions. So building up within an integrated care boards area, the variety of neighbourhood health plans and then building that into that overall plan. So those two are key. What isn't clear at the minute is exactly what roles and relationships will exist between the existing joint health and wellbeing strategies, those new neighbourhood health plans and the population health improvement plans. That's expected in the coming months, but it's all pointed towards a enhanced role for health and wellbeing boards and local authorities in this space. And as we develop the joint health and wellbeing strategy, I think it's kind of staying in line with that guidance as it emerges and making sure the joint health and wellbeing strategy fits that kind of emerging structure in through the 10 year plan. So you've mostly been involved, apart from very new members, in the board development work, which happened between autumn 2024 and spring 2025. And on this slide, we've got some of the headlines which came out from that exercise, particularly as they apply to the development of the joint health and wellbeing strategy. And what really came to the fore there was that a small number of strategic priorities was preferred. So rather than having the 16 or so sub-priorities across four domains, which we have at the minute, which covers a very wide set of particular priorities. This is much more about narrowing down to two, three or four key priorities, which would be the focus of the board's attention for that period of the plan. So very much about narrowing down and very much about being more action focused. So within those smaller number of strategic priorities, really drilling down on where the board can add value and working through partnerships to really give that strategic direction and focus action where it's needed. It's about reflecting the changes to that health and wellbeing landscape as well, many of which had happened by March in terms of some of the shifts we've seen in the recent years. But more coming down the line through the 10 year plan and what's happened subsequently. So reflecting that change as it happens in real time is going to be really important. Alignment of priorities as well. So this is about having that clear alignment between the organisations constituting the board, those kind of wider partnerships across the wider health and care system. And looking at where the joint health and wellbeing strategy comes in and adds value. It's kind of no point really replicating things which already done effectively elsewhere. This is all about drilling into those areas which are going to be key and where the board can make a real difference. Other things which came to the fore through the board development work was the importance of stakeholder collaboration and bringing in those voices, both within but also beyond the board into that. It's about utilizing our joint strategic needs assessment as that intelligence base. It's about setting very clear roles and responsibilities through development of that strategy. So everyone knows what they're doing and then having that roadmap for kind of executing the strategy as it gets to be put in place. In terms of the advice and the input from the Local Government Association who guided us through that development process. There are a couple of quotes around good practice, which I think really stood out and were relevant in this space. And first one there, around partnership working, and I'll read this out. Despite its technical status as committee of council, Health and Wellbeing Board has strategic partnerships and should be a place of strategic action. Really focusing on that kind of local area. And this is about building strong partnerships both within and outside the council. And then kind of really embedding those at that system, place and neighbourhood level. Likewise, the second point around governance is very key there. And that highlights that health and wellbeing boards fail when they behave like committees at the council or fail when they don't recognise the boundaries between them and the health and overview scrutiny committee. So getting that really clear line of responsibilities within that is absolutely key. And as quoted there, getting the right people, having the right conversations with the right frequency is really important to really focus that deliberate and continual effort. So I'll finish on the timeline itself as set out in the paper. So in terms of this, this is about spending around 100 days to get to the draft of the Health and Wellbeing Strategy for consultation. And I'm just under 200 days to the adoption of that. So I'm starting today with the discussion here. We'd be looking to get a workshop in for board members in mid to late July, where we can bring together that intelligence to start those discussions around forming those initial priorities that board members want to focus on. Then during August, we can start to pull together outline plan for that strategy and those potential priorities and options within that. Play that back in September with a workshop of those broader stakeholders to kind of share the outline sketch and draw in their kind of insights and intelligence in that area as well. And then following that workshop, really focus on getting that first draft together. First of all, circulate to board members for comment and further input. And then the finalised paper going to the Health and Wellbeing Board on the 23rd of October, which will then be kind of launched for consultation. Looking across the country, periods of consultation tend to be four, five or six weeks for a joint health and wellbeing strategy. So this timeline is on the basis of that being a five week consultation period. So that seems to be about right in terms of what we've seen in other recent consultations about health and wellbeing boards. Of course, that can be adjusted if the board sees fit. And from there, that's about during December convening, following that consultation, to help me of being board members to consider that consultation feedback, update the strategy accordingly. With with the view to the final joint health and wellbeing strategy being brought to board for approval on the 8th of January. And yeah, that concludes the timeline and our stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up to questions from members of the board.
Thank you, Chair. I would actually consider a six week consultation on that to be to be adequate, really, so that you can get that data in. Definitely six weeks, such because it's summer holidays. People, thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. In terms of the Health Watch have just been announced as being potentially no longer an organisation, I notice that they form part of the terms of reference to the group. Do we have any indication of how we're going to accommodate the loss of Health Watch and what might happen going forward?
Hi, I'm Sarah from Health Watch in Devon. Yeah. As far as we're concerned at the moment, we've got very little detail other than what everybody else has in this room. We've been told to continue as business as usual, and that's the stance that we're taking. And we're very fortunate, the staff and volunteers are all on board with that because they're really passionate about that voice. So wherever we can help moving forward, and we just watch to see how this transition takes place. And I think as more information comes out, I would like to see there will be some element of independent voice that can be still brought to this table and to this board meeting. But at the moment, there is very little information.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate the instability that that brings to your team and the colleagues. I think it is very important that we do make sure that we don't lose sight of the information and the great service that Health Watch has been bringing. And that we find a way to ensure that that information upon which we're making important decisions is somehow bridged. I would be very interested to understand the future for Health Watch and what you think is the right thing to do.
Thank you. So we were equally surprised when it was announced. What we are hearing, and it's similar to what the announcements have been around the ICB. There is a complete lack of clarity, but it does feel like some additional responsibilities will be coming to the local authority. And we don't quite know what that looks like, but there's some discussion around complaints, for example, and enhancing that process. So we do, we definitely need more information because there'll still be a requirement to hear the voice of residents, particularly receipt of health and adult social care services. It's just working through what that's going to look like.
I have a
Thank you. A question, Peter, you able to answer it? So Simon, in the presentation, talked a bit about the 10 year plan and describes the Health and Wellbeing Board picking up the mantle and driving forward the neighbourhood health plans. So we're talking here about the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy. So so either they're two completely separate plans, or I suspect over the shortness of time, that they might merge into a single plan. So based on, at the moment, you have the joint, the Jesner drives our Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy, which connects into the forward plan. I'm assuming rightly or wrongly, Peter, that the Jesner will drive into our neighbourhood health plan, which drives into the Population Health Management Plan, those kind of tiers. But in the absence of having that information, my suggestion is we have to carry on as though we're producing a health and wellbeing strategy. And in the fullness of time, presumably, Peter, we'll get more information. And then we might have to kind of certainly pivot at some point because we don't want to be producing two plans. But Peter, you might have some information around the the plan or not, probably not.
Sadly, the theme of the day, it feels, will be a lack of clarity in terms of future governance. But what, I mean, my observation and the point that I would want to make is that ahead of our clustering, Devon ICB is looking to refresh, or some might argue to construct a health strategy over the same timeframe really. And I think it's an opportunity for us to make sure that we are aligned in terms of what our population need is and what are the relative opportunities and responsibilities as we as we clarify where those responsibilities will sit. Because the issues are the same, they don't change. Who is going to be sitting at the table responsible for delivering the response to those issues changes? So for me, the first stage is being very clear and aligned and data driven on on what our issues are and what the challenges for the population of Devon are. And being sufficiently nimble that we can describe those and then pivot where the responsibility for them sits. But making sure that we are, our strategies are complementary and not contrasting, I think.
So I have a, thank you for that. I've got a second question. I note that unfortunately, we to be able to attract our NHS colleagues from the two trusts to the meeting. And I'm interested that this process that we go through in the future does help them to come to this meeting and feel that it is more value add. Because I do want to see them in the room, because that makes it all relevant for everybody here. And particularly since we're on such an important journey. So I, my desire is that they would be here or send one of their representatives. It's good to see you here, Peter. In terms of the consultation, is it statutory or is it nice to have? Which one is it? Is it a statutory basis or is it the consultation within the Simon Chant's timeline?
Yeah, so just to come in on that, it's it's not a consultation which is kind of set out in terms of a fixed time period or kind of length. I think the advice is to consult on joint health and wellbeing strategies. But yeah, let's say the rules aren't as strict as they are in some kind of other consultations, but which will kind of set a kind of longer time period. But yeah, largely consultations will be a kind of typical basis of a joint health and wellbeing strategy.
Fortunately, I have a third question. The workshop, which is due for mid to late July. I note that not all our council representatives are here, and I would very much like to hear from them. It may be that we end up in a situation where that workshop is not possible between what is July the 9th, 10th, sorry, 10th and let's say July the 24th, which is probably going to be by when people really aren't available. So my question is, what's the consequence of that possibly getting knocked back to late August, early, early September? Is it going to impact? It looks like it's going to really impact, have a consequence for the delivery timeline.
Yeah, thank you. So I think the idea would be to have that in late July, early August would be better. Really, I think that would still be accommodatable within the timeline there. I think it's to facilitate probably two to three weeks at least of post workshop work to kind of pull up, well, the outline of that strategy together to take to the stakeholder group. So yeah, I don't think we'd want to necessarily leave it till the September. But getting it, delaying it until later in July again or early August should be fine.
I would just like to reiterate my thanks for your presentation. In my head, I hope that others will be able to follow suit, is that I've got an intent that there's the first 100 days within which to be able to start this activity, really get it going. And after 100 days, be able to look back, which you mentioned in your presentation, and say, this is how much progress we have made to be to to change. I really get the idea from a chair perspective that there needs to be three or four key priorities. And I will focus on that. And I will try to make sure that in meetings that we approve whatever needs to be approved. We get consult on whatever needs to be consulted. And if there's something for information, that will be read or taken as read. So I'm going to make sure that these sessions are really productive or as productive as possible. Any other questions before we move on? Steve, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just picking up the point around the two comments within the LGA response. And one of the comments was specifically about a partnership way of working and how examples across the country where they've, I don't know how they do it, but they've kind of morphed slightly from a more of a committee to a partnership to allow more, the way I interpreted it, more robust dialogue to capture actions to maybe not undertake those in public, for example. So I guess it's just whether or not as a board, we went to, I don't, this decision needs to be today, but whether that's something we want to explore further around what it might look like constitutionally, what the impact might be to shift us towards a more of a partnership way of working than a formal committee. I just, I thought it was really helpful comments and reflection from the LGA.
I'm less familiar with the workings of committees within the council. So I'm happy to take advice on how committees work versus a partnership. I understand that we do need time to be able to have a good conversation, which allows us to be quite frank and straightforward. But at the same time, I just, I need to understand more myself about how that might work. And I would need to have advice, but it sounds like a good idea if we're able to have at least a good proportion of our meetings in public, but also a significant proportion of them where we're able to bat back and forth, have a good debate based around facts on the way forward in the strategy that we're developing. So I'm open minded to to your proposal. I would think we just need to know a little bit more. Could we bring it to have interim discussions and bring it to the next meeting? I note that this is a recommendation for this section, which is a recommendation that the board agrees the process and timelines for publication of the joint health and wellbeing strategy and contributes to its development. Do we have a proposer? Do we have a seconder? Stephanie. Stephanie Lewis, thank you. Can we have a vote, please? So the recommendation's carried. That then I think we can move on to the next item. Cheers, just remind me. I've got the old one there, so. Okay, so on the the Better Care Funding Update, this is a presentation by Solvay Wright, Deputy Director, Integrated Social Care. In that case, perhaps we could, could we go, could we switch items around? That's fine. In that case, perhaps we could, could we go, could we switch items around? That's fine. So could we move to NHS Devon update? From Dr Peter Collins.
Thank you. The doctor is optional, by the way. I've noticed that I'm the only one who has to have a title. So. It's, I do, I do have medical degree, just to be clear. So thanks, Chair. And I welcome an opportunity to provide an update. From what is a fairly tumultuous time for reasons I think we all understand in Devon ICB, but still important for us to focus. On the needs of our population. So I'll take the report as read. The first section covers dentistry provision. And I guess the points I would want to bring out are covered in terms of our attempts to improve. The current commission provision for dental services. Some of the challenges there are around workforce and provision of practices to do the dentistry. That we already recognise and would want to pay for. So efforts to improve the units of dental activity as described. Also, our renewed efforts to meet the government, the government's targets of improving access to urgent dentistry. And our efforts around that. And also really importantly, and particularly given the context of what we've been talking about already. A recognition that urgent dentistry is failure demands for what we should be doing earlier on to our population. And so a real focus. And I think amenable efforts within our Devon workforce to provide. Preventative oral health, particularly in our paediatric and our children, child population. And then lastly, on the dental section, I guess, Chair, you were keen to understand trade offs. So one of the trade offs described in there is. A re, a reappraisal of our current helpline for those who are unable to access dentistry, which will be a shift away from. And this, or trying to redirect empowered citizens to understand that it isn't a helpline that is designed to solve a problem for not having a dentist. It is designed to signpost people to where they may be able to find help to get another dentist. Do you want me to take each of the sections in turn, or do you want me to go through all three?
In this case, I think you can go through all three.
Okay, so second in our update is then, as we've already discussed again. The tenure plan, which I will refer to as Fit for the Future, only because the NHS is forever producing tenure plans. And there is a danger that we mistake it's the last tenure plan from 2009. So the Fit for the Future tenure plan now has been published. Within the last week or so, it signals, and forgive me, I've just made some helpful notes, which I shall refer to if I may. A number of points that I think I would want to bring out from the tenure plan, which I'm happy to bring back. And it feels appropriate for us all to spend some further time and debate on the specifics of the plan. But unsurprisingly, it recommends the shifts from illness to promoting health. So a real desire to move towards developing healthy communities, healthy citizens who are empowered to stay healthy. To prevent people needing help and. Complex and expensive treatment further down the line. A real focus on the delivery of that through neighbourhood based integrated care. Again, a concept that's been around for a long time, but an indication that there will be stronger, stronger levers to develop local based. Data driven understanding of where there is appropriate variation and how neighbourhoods can leverage community assets, healthcare providers. And the wider care system to really keep citizens healthy and looking after themselves. But having equitable access to more complex care as and when required. Maintain focus on tackling health inequality, recognising that the disparity between healthy life years and indeed life expectancy. For the richest and poorest in our population and some of our communities of identity. Is something that we need to continually pay attention to. And there is a danger in a resource constrained environment that we focus on. The needs of the many and we forget the important needs of the few. So I think a real focus on that, that is welcome. A recognition that some of the tools for us to achieve these aims sit around data and digital technology. And a real focus on that around population health and population health management. An understanding of a need to transform the health and care workforce, but also to leverage those important assets within our community, which are the people who live within them. Those members of our voluntary sector, but also more widely to empower citizens to look after themselves and their neighbours. And then the slightly more gritty and unfortunate bit, which is about the system reforms that we need to put in place to enable any of that. Aspirational ambition to happen, which is about a recognition that there needs to be better financial alignment to outcomes. Rather than just paying for activity. So, and I think that this is where the read across to the health and wellbeing strategy. And what will replace it comes is that we need to understand the needs of our local population to be able to. Contract and commission in a more strategic basis to make sure we're shifting resources to meet the needs as outlined in the plan. And a reduction of the complexity of the delivery of and scrutiny and of health and social care. Which includes, I guess, and brings me on to the third section, which is around the needs to simplify. And reduce the expense of some of the, the non patient facing delivery of health. Which includes the integrated care boards. And so. There is a final section, a letter from the chairs and chief executives of both Devon ICB and Cornwall of the ICB. Which outlines the agreement at a national level that Devon and Cornwall of the ICB will cluster. Ahead of progression to a formal merger within about a two year timeframe. And it sets out the steps. And importantly, it seeks to reassure partners and our public that whilst how we are running our health services will change. Our desires to continue to improve them to meet the needs of our population will remain the same. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief Medical Officer, Doctor. I'd just like to. Say, I was pleased to hear about prevention education within the dentistry. Something that my residents talk to me about regular, that they're unable to access that. Nice to hear about the helpline. I think that that is a real positive within that. But you also mentioned about outcomes, healthier outcomes. And that's something where, you know, councillors on districts, boroughs and city councils that have leisure centres. Need to do some joined up thinking for outcomes within our communities. And, and that joint work starts with you and ourselves as well, seeing if we can do something a lot better around that. I'd like to explore that further. Thank you very much, Doctor.
Thank you. I've got a question. Could you comment on the, we're going to dentistry. I've come across the dental contract, I've actually read through it. And I understand that there may be a modification or a new version coming through. Have you got, is there any insight to any timeline to when that might appear?
Not at the moment. So I think there is a desire, again, a recognition through Fit for the Future. That some of the current contractual arrangements in, in primary care in its wider sense. And so when I use the term primary care as opposed to general practice, that includes pharmacy, pharmacy, sorry, optometry. So eyes and dentistry, that some of the contractual arrangements make it quite difficult to manage a complex market. And to secure consistent provision. And I think that the incentives for providing continuity of care, for instance. Are not present in the current contract. So I think there, there is a desire to renegotiate. But as ever, the complexity of making sure that's within the appropriate resource envelope and is acceptable to. The providers of those services will mean that I don't imagine that that will be quick. Certainly, I know it will not be quick for the general practice contracts. And I suspect it will be the same for dentistry. But as ever, that doesn't mean that there won't be steps along the way that may make improvements.
Thank you. Got another question on the second subject, which was the NHS 10 year plan. You mentioned that was all subject to resources. Standing back in what I read in the press, I understand that there are budget rollovers taking, not allowed anymore, which has a significant impact for our NHS partners. And there are also impacts here at Devon County, which mean there are going to be some very difficult decisions about what resources and funding we have and what services we can roll out. It would be good to understand or having a summary of where we are with the, I'll call it a crisis in funding. For the, the NHS services, which provide our services and also with the picture, very brief picture from Devon County. So that we know exactly what the situation is versus resource versus service, so that we can understand. That precipice that we're looking over and understand the consequences of the decisions and recommendations that are made by our colleagues here in Devon County and elsewhere.
And thanks, Chair. I think that's really welcome. It sort of segues nicely into the comments I made about the, the development, the rapid development really of our. Our refreshed health and care strategy, which will set out exactly those challenges. We are intending to do that over the next couple of months. And I think we, indeed colleagues from local governments are inputting into the workshops into that. But I would see that the case for change that sits within that strategy will define some of what you're asking for. In terms of a more detailed understanding of the fact that you are correct to say that currently Devon ICB. Has a significant deficit financially, which. At least the signals are, will not be supported in the medium to long term. And so we will have to work hard to reprioritise the money that we spend. And that will include some very difficult conversations, which I'm sure will be rehearsed around this table and many.
Thank you. On the last point, which was to do with the ICBs. Do you see that the characterisation of the ICBs, what they currently do as a range of services. Will change between what we have currently and what is the future format where we will, where the ICBs will cover a much larger area? Can you characterise the way those will, have you got a feeling or a characterisation for the way that will work?
Absolutely. So I was lucky enough to be part of some of the national work on understanding what the purpose of the future ICB should be. So I think there is a feeling at government that, that ICB should be smaller functions and they should focus on strategic commissioning. And by, by that, I mean the big changes in terms of service provision that will better meet the needs of our population. By reducing waste in services that aren't achieving much in terms of outcomes. And focusing more on prevention and the development of neighbourhood health. So. So that, that really understanding the data that we have about our population, understanding what that means and what we can do differently will be the business of ICBs. There will be less duplication, particularly around some of the insurance and quality management. That's not to say that quality won't be an important focus in terms of outcomes based commissioning. But some of the marketing of people's homework, if you like, will be taken away. And there will be some specific functions that are being considered. For the ICBs currently do, including some statutory functions that will be positioned elsewhere, including in local authority. Into regional teams and international teams.
Thank you for that. It's quite clear that there's going to be a need, I'm going to use the word scrutiny here. While these changes are taking place to make sure that the ball doesn't get dropped on, for some of our. Communities that have inequalities. Thank you. Any other questions? So this has been noting. Thank you very much. And I appreciate very much your presentation. The implications of the presentation are pretty immense. So it's vital that we are aware of what they are. And understand how they impact each of the services, service providers that are here around the table. Brilliant. Thank you. Hi, Solvay. Thank you for coming to the meeting. And we just rejigged the agenda. So it would be nice now to receive your update. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And apologies, I wasn't here at the time of my, you've gone through a little faster than I was expecting. So my apologies for that. And so my name's Sobe Wright. I'm the Deputy Director of Commissioning for Adult Social Care. And I would normally present this with my opposite number in the Integrated Care Board. I have just spent the morning with colleagues from the, across the NHS, looking at hospital discharge. And one of my colleagues who would have presented this with me has been called into an urgent meeting, which is often the way of, of working in the NHS. So he does send his apologies, but this has been put together jointly. It's a bumper report this month. So the, the Health and Wellbeing Board is required to sign off the various national reports for the Better Care Fund. And as ever, the timings don't align and we are not unique in Devon with this. So we have the ability to, for the Chair. To sign off the reports in the absence of the board meeting. So that's what's happened. So what we're doing here with some of this is. Retrospectively approving something that's already been approved. So you'll see there are four recommendations, the quarter three report, the end of year report. With that, the outturn position, and then the plans for 25, 26. What I would propose is because the end of year report sort of precedes the quarter three reports, because it's always, we've gone that bit further. I wasn't going to talk to the quarter three, I was going to go straight to the end of year, which is section four, page, it's page five on mine, it's probably page 100 and something on yours. But at section four. And so just, just for, just a little bit of. Context, because I'm mindful we have new, new members here and there's quite a lot to get up to speed with. So the Better Care Fund, it's mandatory. It's a joint initiative where we, we share, we're integrated and we share a pot of money. We are directed how much money to share with our NHS colleagues. And that is for the joint planning and commissioning of services. And mostly it's about stopping people getting into hospital. And if they are in hospital, it's making sure they come out as quickly as possible. And you have that wrap around support. I mean, that's, that's fundamentally what it's, what it's for. So in terms of how we're measured on a few key metrics, of course, it's really hard to measure all the very many things that keep people out of hospital or help them. Recover quickly once they're out. But there are some key metrics. So some of those are avoidable emissions. So how do we stop people going into hospital? Or conditions that we think could be managed in the community. If they were managed well, they wouldn't go into hospital. So things like, we call them chronic ambulatory care sensitive conditions, but it's, it's things like. You know, respiratory conditions and things that you'd expect people to stay, they have to stay at home. So we did slightly better than our target for the year. And, you know, there's all sorts of reasons for that, some of which are funded things through the Better Care Fund. But in general, as a system, we do everything we can to support people in the community to keep them at home. And we did very slightly better than planned for that one. The next one is falls. Didn't used to be, it's a new metric, relatively new metric for the Better Care Fund. But the reason we, we measure the falls is because we, that's a measure of sort of people's frailty. And once people fall, we do know that tends to, particularly older, frailer people, does often mean other conditions get exacerbated or they end up in hospital. So this is new. So we're still working out the baseline. So we didn't achieve our target for 24, 25. We were slightly over that target, but we're still looking at the, how we benchmark there to get that, get that right. And we've got. Various activities that take place in the community that, about falls prevention and encouraging people's strength and confidence and balance to try and prevent those falls. Next one is if people are in hospital, getting back home. So getting back to their usual place of residence. So if you're in hospital, that you really want to get back home as quickly as possible, the longer you're in hospital. The longer you're in hospital, the more you decondition and lose confidence. So we want to get people home as quickly as possible. And again, we did slightly better than our target in 2425. You know, we, that we are, we work really hard to get people home and not go, you know, into a, into a care home or into a community hospital. We've enabled them to get straight home with the right support around them. And then lastly, we measure residential admissions. And so this is about long-term support needs being met in a, in a residential care home. And the reason we, we have this as a target is because we want to support people in their own homes to remain independent in their own homes and communities with their families and friends and everything that we would all want ourselves. That's, that's our aim for everybody and that is a national aim. And we are, we didn't achieve our target for that. So there's a, there's a bit more nuance with this. So there has been, and members of the board who've been, have been report before, we have seen an unintended consequence of some work with hospital discharge about supporting people to get out of hospital quickly. We've seen more people go into care homes on what was intended to be a short term stay for a bit of, you know, a bit of rehab, getting back on their feet. They've ended up staying longer. And that's exactly what I've been working on this morning with all of our NHS partners and the National Lead Hospital Discharge. So really some great work come out of that because we're all aware of it. So we will be tackling that. The other issue, and this always sounds like it's a bit of an excuse, doesn't it? But there was a change to the national methodology about how we record this. So this will be a similar picture across the country that there is a that the methodology had changed. So we're not quite comparing apples with apples. However, we do think we were off target with this for all the reasons I've said. Bring you on to section five, which is about the financial outturn. So these are quite eye watering sums, aren't they really? 131 million. But it's all really well governed. Some of it just literally passports, passports straight through us to our district and city councils for the disabled facilities grants. And we work really closely with our district and city councils on that. And we also have a hospital discharge grant, so the discharge I've just mentioned. And then the general, the, the, the sort of two general pots that go into that. And forecast spending at year end. But the year, this was based on month 10, but we've been able to, to, to look at that. So we were reporting spending three and a half million over target and that is, that is where we ended. So we had, that's mostly our community equipment store. So that's, that's, that's equipment that enables people to get out of hospital quickly and or stop them going into hospital in the first place. Really important. And my finance colleagues won't welcome me saying this, but I will say it's not overspent. It's just not got a right sized budget because the budget hasn't changed for a number of years. But however, that still means it's, it's overspent compared to the money we have set aside. We do have a new contract in place, same provider, but new contract. And that will deliver at least £700,000 worth of efficiencies in the current financial year. So that was, that was part of the, we had to go out to procure because the gold contract had ended. But part of it was about doing things differently, more efficiently and effectively. So we will see a better and improved position in the current year. The other area which contributed to the overspend was the carers hospital scheme. So that was a short term piece of work that we continued to fund. But as a result, we didn't actually have a substantive budget for it. That has now ended with other mitigations and things in place. So that, that pressure has, has been removed. Then to take through the last bit of this report is, is a bumper one. It's not normally quite this much in one go. Our, we're required to put a plan in place about how we're going to govern and spend our Better Care Fund for the, for the current year. And there's templates and titles, you know, the headings that we, that we have to complete for that. It aligns with the, the whole system joint board plan, which sets out how we work together. It talks about how the BCF complements everything else we're doing. It's not a plan in silo. Everything we're doing is about working together to keep people out of hospital and then get them out as quickly as we can. If they do go in, it's about how we work with our, our city council and our district councils on the disabled facilities grants. How do we get people's houses, housing made fit for purpose? So they can stay at home and, and come home quickly from hospital. And as I said, the hospital discharge program, which is a huge piece of work, it's really important that we all work together so that people's experience of coming out of hospital is seamless and they come back home as quickly as possible with the right supporting place and get back to independence as quickly as possible. That's all governed through a BCF leadership group, which is a multi-agency group. I chair that one. And we report up to what we've called the BCF execs group, which is exactly what it says on the tin. It's the execs across the system and our finance directors and our director of adult social care. And then we have a BCF business group, which kind of are responsible for managing the business and monitoring the contracts and things. Section six talks you through that, you know, we've had to, we've had to identify how are we supporting the objectives of the BCF, which are exactly as I think Peter's just talked through about the, the NHS plan about the shift from sickness to prevention and joined up support for people. So we, we talk about how we do that. And then that reform to support people living independently and the shift from hospital to home. That is everything the Better Care Fund has been about ever since its inception. So, you know, I'm really pleased to see that, that real alignment there. So I'm aware, I've really whistled through that very quickly. And there's, there's a lot there. What I would normally do is bring a one quarter report at a time. And then we can perhaps deep dive some of those, normally reporting on those metrics. And I'm really happy to sort of go into a bit more detail about each of those as we go, rather than having to sort of whistle stock through all those, those four elements that I needed you to note today.
Thank you very much. Questions, please.
Thank you, Chair. Solvay, you've certainly got your finger on the pulse on the Better Care Fund. And we have overspend. Can I be straight? Are we getting good value for residents' money and better outcomes? I think you explained that to me, but I'll ask you directly.
Yes. So the, the, I would, I would say we are, there's, these are, these are long established investments. And we've done a lot of work trying to exactly that. Are we getting best value for money? Are we spending the right amount? And we spent the last two or three years going through reviewing each of the items that are funded through it and making sure they meet the objectives of the Better Care Fund. And they do. And I would have expected them to because we know what needs to be done. I think the issue is that the Better Care Fund hasn't grown at the pace that demand has grown. But that's my job as a commissioner, isn't it? It's about how do I manage, you know, how do we manage demand? And then how do we make sure that the services we are purchasing are good value for money and we don't overspend? So the big focus for the current year is some of the smaller areas of spend, because we have to look at everything. But the big target is around making sure our carers contract is offering value for money. Because that's quite a large sum of spend and we're working really closely with West Bank, who are a fantastic organisation. And working hand in glove with us about making sure that we're getting really good value for money and the best outcomes. Biggest worry for me, if I'm honest, would be the community equipment service, because that is a demand left service. We absolutely need to get that commitment into people's houses. We also need to get it back again. Because we recycle it and we, we use it again. I'm really excited about the new contract. It's, the fact it's the incumbent provider is great because there's less time to, to get them operationally up to it. The challenge, of course, is how do we stop us just keep doing what we've always done? Because it's the same provider. So it is a new contract. The reason we're able to deliver some efficiencies within the new contract is because we have simplified it. We've stopped trying to make it all wizzy and do lots of stuff. It's basically getting equipment from A to B and back again. And making sure that the, that when we want new kit, new equipment, new, new technology enabled care and support, that we get that on the catalogue and get it out, get it out to people. So we've simplified it a lot. And that's how we're able to make efficiencies, along with things like the way the, the system works, the, you know, the the, the system of ordering equipment and getting it, getting it back. The early stage forecast for this year, and I hesitate to say this because it's so positive. I, I'm, I've asked our finance leads to check it again. It's looking like an overspend at the moment. Taking a side hospital discharge, which we, which we need to tackle, is looking at something like about a million overspent. Now, I should never be here confidently saying, oh, it's only a million because it's still overspent. Putting that into perspective, that's half a million pounds for each partner as a, as a cost pressure. What I would say is this is a large sum of money and it should be achievable to deliver a million pounds worth of savings in year. So I'm not going to absolutely promise it and nail colours to the mast, but it, it's much more, a million pounds is much more of a sensible target to aim at.
Thank you, Solvay, for that. And I noted it down. So I'll be expecting it. And just to note, Chair, that on 4.1.2, that I approved the submission on 5th of June 2025 to align with the deadline on 6th of June 25. Thank you.
If I may, I have a question. I'm being, we are, I'm being asked to endorse, which might, which is the word approved. I noticed that there was a budget for last year and we can see exactly what the overrun was. And I understand the context of that. In the forward, the plans for BCF in 2526, don't see any financial figures as yet. Obviously, we've only just come to the end of quarter one. So I could imagine a lot of people working in the background. In my, my head, even if there was an estimate, I would have thought there might be a, some sort of indicative figures for what the budget would be. Is it the same as last year? Has it increased by inflation or what's the projection for that to be this next year? And I, I noticed Tandra, you your question afterwards.
Yeah.
Wonder how we might answer that question. Thanks.
Yeah. So that's, and that's exactly the right question. Is that I'm being asked to endorse a plan? So we were, we had to submit a narrative plan rather than the actual sums of it, because the sums are set so broadly. I don't have the figures immediately to hand, but it is, it's within the region of what it was last year. And that the, what we're spending on continues from last year. But I'm really happy to the next meeting, we normally have a financial outturn. I'm really happy to give a bigger, a more detailed breakdown of what that means. So as I said, we've just had our, our month one reporting. Our finance teams are caught up with other bits at the moment. So we haven't got a month three. But our, our month one was showing indicative far improved position, still overspent, but far improved. So I'm really happy at the next meeting to bring a proper breakdown of that. So you can see some of the other areas of spend.
I would be very grateful for that. I've not, I don't want to do what scrutiny does in any way. But to understand the, let's call it the budget, to understand where we are on that pathway. And also with the, when we talked about the larger picture of the situation at Torbay, the situation at RDNE. Also here at DCC, it's, it's understanding that budget in the context of the larger picture. And business as usual may be the right way forward, but I would be looking to my colleagues here to indicate whether we have to think about doing something a little bit more radical than, than the good work you're doing already. So I'm interested to understand what options might, might be a future pathway, given what I've understood only at this stage by what I read in the press and some of the information I've received. But it might be that there's going to need to be some thinking and some options appraisal for some changes in the way that we do things. And I'm just not aware at this stage what those would be. I just would like to be aware of them before, let's say, at some point when you're ready to, to be able to explain them and to be able to discuss them in the right environment as well, because some of it will be very sensitive.
I'm really happy to bring us a high level overview of what that means and what we're looking at and what, where the movement is, you know, the sort of the overarching savings plan. Yeah.
Thank you. Tandra, you've got a question. Go ahead, please.
So I really wanted to add to your list because, sorry, Solvay, but so you alluded to it before, there's a lot of changes. There's currently a fairer funding review. They're looking at how they do things differently at a national level and how those Better Care Funds is paid across into local authorities. And I'm presuming to NHS partners, which may bring with it some opportunities, but also may bring it with it some challenges if they introduce a new relative needs formula. So I think for a future meeting, you might want to ask some questions about that, although we're not very clear. But one thing that we are aware of is with the new neighbourhood, you know, the, the NHS 10 year plan, the three shifts, there is a, some thinking that we will think about using the Better Care Fund differently, which is quite difficult because it is connected into things for both our local acute partners as well as the local authorities. So a bit of a guide to how that investment works might be helpful. And I think it's something Solvay would have to do with NHS colleague to, to, for you to get both halves of it. But I'm sort of hinting at there are further changes to come. And I think that probably would be helpful for you to understand. I suspect it is more for scrutiny to understand any radical changes that might need to take place if, if that happens.
Thank you. If you have any, I'd be happy to receive a comment from yourself. No, in this case, no. But thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any more questions? No. So at this stage, we're being expected, we're expected as a board to endorse the the recommendations 1.1 to 1.4. I think we, I mean, I'm minded to endorse with the provision that we, we talked about, understanding a little bit more about the budgets and the consequences and the options and how that works regarding 1.4. So could I move that to endorsement approval? And a second, and can we have a vote, please? So item 10, which is the Suicide Prevention Strategy and Action Plan update from Nikki Glassbrook, please. Nikki, over to you.
Yes. Hello, everybody. I'm just trying to load up. I've got, here we go. Hurrah. So I think everybody received a paper, which was our annual update around suicide prevention. And I thought just because, again, there's probably some new members, it might be useful to just do also a little overview. So for those of you that don't know, suicide prevention is led by local authorities. So for Devon, it's led by us here at Public Health Devon. And we oversee the strategic group. So we have the Suicide Prevention Implementation Group and we deliver an action plan every year. I always put this as a caveat. We are, you know, where usually if I go into a presentation somewhere around suicide, suicide prevention, the work we do, I would always have somebody come up to me afterwards and talk about how they've either been affected by someone's suicide. So I just always think, you know, we are talking about quite emotive subjects. We're talking about people who've lost their lives. So to always look after your own wellbeing and seek support. And I've got some things at the end of the presentation to signpost you to that. This is just a quick overview of our trends and suicide rates in Devon. And so as you can see, the top line being Devon and the bottom line being England, we are seeing a rise in our suicide rates here in Devon. But I just think it's important to understand that suicide is a very complex thing that's, you know, there's a multifactor reasons that might lead somebody to ending their own life. And also as some people might be aware, we base these figures on data that we get from the ONS every year. That is published around about September, October time. And that tells us the deaths that have been registered in a particular year, rather than the deaths that occurred in that year. So it's the deaths that have been through a coronial process, you know, there's been an inquest for. Covid had a big impact on the number of inquests that were carried out across Devon. As did the KIM inquiry that came soon after that. It meant that one of the coroners was actually just focusing on that for six months and not carrying out any inquest. So we have got a, a delay in registration. We do have a real time surveillance system that is operated across the whole of Devon and supported by Devon and Cornwall. We do have a real time surveillance system that is operated across the whole of Devon and supported by Devon and Cornwall Police, which allows us to see suspected suicides in real time. We get weekly reports. So we can, obviously, you know, the big caveat around that is that it is the coroner's job to decide the cause of death and not ours. So I always say suspected. So that helps us to keep an eye on that. So it, it does, you know, that's just the real caveat around some of the data. But I think it's fair to say, real time, the ONS data, we are seeing a, an increase in the number of suicides across Devon. This is kind of very typical of suicide rates that it's usually three, the, the rate, the numbers about three quarters male and a quarter female. We have seen some increases amongst female suicides, but we're still, and this is kind of, this is kind of the national picture as well. So we're not deviating in Devon, if you like, from the sort of rough split of, of suicides between male and female. The next slide just quickly shows you, and this is suicides between, so the registered deaths between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty three, and just shows the age bands. And again, this is fairly typical. It reflects in the national data as well. And we know that for men, the sort of peak area is sort of right between forty five and fifty four for male suicides. Again, we're seeing some increase in younger people. And some increase as well, right at the older pages of eighty. But again, that's pretty much in line with national data. And again, this is just to reiterate the, the delay in, 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 in quests, in the registration. However, I do know, because obviously we liaise with the coronel offices quite closely, they, there has been, there's about four or five coroners now working across. For those who don't know, the coroner's offices have merged. It's one coroner's office for the whole of Devon, including Plymouth and Torbay. They have, I think, about five or six coroners working and they are working at pace, which might mean that our registrations this year will have increased again. But, you know, they, there might be a lag on those. And really just, we talk about in our suicide action plans. I think we came in March because one of the things we're looking at is having a single suicide prevention action plan across the whole of Devon, working with our partners in Plymouth and Torbay. We work really closely with our partners in Plymouth and Torbay, among a number of initiatives that we roll out anyway, including training. We've done some GP training together. We ran a conference that looked at suicide prevention in the context of domestic violence and sexual abuse last year. So we, we've got, but we are going to produce a single action plan. But we, you know, we really talk about suicide being everybody's business. So I've just put some, these were already in the paper that we sent. But obviously, we have a Suicide Prevention Implementation Group for Devon County Council. We meet three or four times a year. We were very fortunate in the last administration that we had a couple of councillors who kind of were mental health champions and really supported the work that we did. And we do welcome that from members. There is a Free Suicide Alliance Suicide Awareness E-learning module. And I really encourage everybody to look at that. It's twenty minutes long. And it really gives you the foundation. We have a number of resources that we produce. I've brought some with me this afternoon. We've got the It's Safe to Talk About Suicide Zed Card, which was co-produced with people who've got lived experience. And it talks about some of the myths, how to start to have a conversation and where to sign people that you might be concerned about. There's also a leaflet and all these links alive, Devon Partnership Trust, the words matter leaflet. So that's about some sort of the language. And then, of course, being public health, what we also like to do is go a bit upstream because we believe if people were better able to manage their own mental health and wellbeing and cope with those, you know, they'd be better equipped when life throws them a, you know, a rough card. And so we look, we adopt the five ways to wellbeing. So these are just the things that we can all do to support our mental health. And again, we've got resources which I've bought with me this afternoon.
Thank you. Any questions from the?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Nikki. It's quite an emotive subject for me. Having lost one member of my family and it's the family that it leaves behind as well, asking why. Can I ask, given that we're hearing about carers are reporting that they are socially isolated, what can we do about those carers and how can we help?
Thank you, councillor Keeling. So firstly, just to let you know, we support the ICB who do commission a suicide bereavement service. So we have an absolutely fantastic service across Devon to support people who are bereaved by suicide. What we would, in terms of carers, my colleague Natalie and I, we are doing a series of, we can do webinars, we can, you know, we're looking at producing short films, webinars, going to face to face meetings to talk to any groups about raising the awareness, telling people what resources we have available and signposting them to appropriate services. So that is something we could definitely do for carers.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you. I've got a question. I have fortunately had a friend who passed away in February this year in these unfortunate circumstances. So I do understand, or I think I do. I'm impressed with the time, the need for timely intervention. So learning from that, what I went through in, in February, the speed with which an intervention is needed is, is really quite paramount, a coordination between different multidisciplinary teams to be able to manage each individual, and they are individuals, is, is a key parameter in terms of being successful to avoid suicide or to prevent suicide. So I'm appreciative. And if I'd known about the twenty minute online thing, there was a, a good few days when I needed that.
Yeah.
I would have been able to then learn from that to use in a real life situation. Coming back to though, section seven, the financial considerations, I'm reading that in that section, that previously you've been in receipt of NHSE transformation funding. However, these funds will run out this year and there is no indication of any further funding from NHSE. From April twenty twenty five, we will be reliant on funds from our public health grant to continue limited product, program to support the delivery of our action plan. Could you comment on those plans and explain, is this a crisis that we're going to be seeing in this next year in terms of funding for your services?
Well, as, as a public health team, we don't commission any mass, like I said, the ICB commissions the Suicide Bereavement Service. And we are, I'm working with colleagues within the ICB to look at the re-commissioning of that. Which, as far as I know, is, you know, that, that's all well and good. The things that we pay for in terms of our own input are the data analysts for the real time surveillance that I mentioned. We have a small training program which features the Connect Five. And also we're able to offer Assist, which is a two day. It's the sort of gold standard of suicide prevention training. And we also provide a small grants scheme where we look at, you know, working with the voluntary sector. It gives us an opportunity really to engage with what the voluntary sector are doing to support them. And also, you know, to be innovative to, because especially when we're looking at and supporting men, we know that sometimes that's about an indirect support. So it might be, you know, the classic sort of men in sheds, there's Andy's Club. It might be more activity based stuff, people who are skilled up to have those conversations rather than therapy. So we're not doing the treatment side. And we also, I mean, and that's also part of the rationale of working more closely with our colleagues across in Torbay and Plymouth because we can share our resources across. So we would, we've not done, we've never done a massive sort of, you know, we don't commission a lot of services. And those are the areas that we focus on and will continue to.
Thank you. Would you say that you would, you would, community, so there's patient participation groups and there are community organisations and charities which regular contact with those in need in our communities. Are you able to, let's say, bring your message to those groups or how do you bring the message?
Yeah, we try to. So we go through organisations like the Mental Health Alliance. We work with Devon Communities Foundation. And although they're a grant giving organisation, they, they are in touch with a lot of the voluntary sector as well as Devon Communities together. So we do, and I think that's where, you know, which isn't necessarily about commissioning money, but it's that comms and getting messages across is, is one of the aspects we're really focusing on this year. And with Natalie and I going out and actually talking to community groups and people and getting those messages out.
Thank you. Any questions from other members of the board? Go ahead.
It wasn't a question, it was an offer of help actually, just around that communication. Both Steph and I sit on the Devon BCSE Exec Group, which supports seven, eight hundred various sized organisations across Devon. You'd be very welcome to come and give some form of training, education to one of those meetings.
Love them.
And I forward that to them.
I know, I, I know today when I was coming, I was thinking, because, you know, about tapping into the town and parish councils as well. Yeah. So I mean, I keep jokingly saying that Natalie and I are for hire at the moment. But, but, you know, it's part of our, our drive to really get out there. And because I think, you know, it's one of those areas where it is more about the messaging and getting people to have the conversations and raising that awareness rather than commissioning a thing, i- if you like, I mean, the training, you know, if any more money we will get, we will probably pile into providing more training, more, you know, and more resources to kind of get, get the messaging out.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And that report is for information only at this stage. Question from Peter.
Couple of things. Firstly, that last conversation, I think, is really helpful in, in illustrating how leveraging community assets and our community's assets is perhaps a way of not having to just spend money to achieve a result. So thank you for highlighting that. A second is a question out of ignorance for me, if I may, which is just thinking about the demographic challenge for, for our population and for Devon, Cornwall and Arse silly, in terms of an aging and more frail population. And I have, and I see no reference, I guess, to the slightly delicate subject of those who may have a life limiting illness or may feel that they have that ending their own life is not necessarily a preventable or a thing to be avoided. And I don't know whether you have any feel for that component and what you might do differently about that, given the debate about assist.
Yeah. I know, it's a, it's a delicate subject, isn't it? And I, we do, and when I alluded to some of those older, so, so one of, you know, some, what we tend to do is we tend to look at obviously at risk groups and then risk factors. We could almost do something like a thematic analysis of the data that we get through our real time surveillance. And we do see things like chronic pain. And, you know, people who've been given a, a life limiting diagnosis, ending, ending their own lives. So, you know, I would say not massively, but it is there. And I guess we just have to watch and wait what happens with the assisted living bill. And maybe it's something that moves out of our kind of remit. But, you know, but we do certainly note that as risk factors. And obviously, some of those people might not necessarily fall into the, I think it's quite a narrow band, isn't it, for the assisted living bill? So, yeah, but it is something we do notice. We do keep an eye on our, you know, our risk factors. And when we're seeing things, and that's what's the beauty of having a real time surveillance system is, is that you can see those things that are maybe a little bit out of the ordinary. So methods that people are using that are a bit different or, yeah, or whether we, yeah. So that's why it's, it's worth its weight in gold, really.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. Steve, please, go ahead.
One question, one, and one point. I mean, firstly, just to say, the work which, which Natalie and Nikki do and have been doing for years, it's been tremendous. Nikki did kind of talk a bit about the, the relationship with the coroner and the importance around the suicide, around the, the data and the timings of the data. I have to say, that's not the same across the whole of the South West. So, you know, and it's due to work of Nikki, building those relationships with the coroner and the coroner being prepared to provide that data in a timely way, really puts us on the front foot. So that's really, really important to say, I have colleagues who are envious of the work we do in Devon because of that relationship. Because the second one was more of a question, Chair, you alluded to. So, so could you give us a very quick vignette of, and I'm going to use it specifically for, for young people. And because we, we, we are mindful and have seen all in the media and press around young people traditionally committing suicide and the impact that has on their immediate friends. But also, you know, that kind of Monday morning at, at school. Could you just describe pretty how, how quickly the agencies kind of come together to offer that?
Yeah.
To, as a postvention.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think this is one of the joys as well we have by having the commissioned suicide bereavement service. And what we did is we, we put the data analyst for our real time service embedded into there. And it allowed us to see that, you know, sadly, you know, when there is a death, particularly in a school or a college, the ripples of that are quite wide. And, you know, even among people who may not have been best friends with that person, but were maybe in the same class and, and the staff as well. So it enabled us to work quite closely with Ed Psych here at DCC and develop a protocol and share and develop some resources for schools. Because the other thing that came to light is if, if that person's under eighteen, there is kind of a pretty fast notification thing that happens through the front door. But if that person is over eighteen, that doesn't happen. But that, you know, so we had a situation in the college where everybody knew before the college knew that a person had potentially ended their life by suicide. So we've written some protocols, again, working with Ed Psych around that. So I think we are pretty able to respond where we see a gap that, that needs something. And the other thing that we've kind of devised as well, with little bits of extra bit of funding, is when things like that do happen, the bereavement service are able to provide something called an immediate response. So they can quite quickly get some of their suicide bereavement support officers and maybe some councillors to that school or workplace or college and then have a, either a group meeting, some one to ones. Because what they've found is if they do that quite quickly, it means that those people may not need an intense levels of support or support with their mental health a bit further down the line. So, yeah, that is one of the things we've been able to do. Thanks for asking, Steve.
Thank you. I'm aware that councillor Maloney would like to perhaps ask a question. Was that, sorry. Sorry, I miss, I, I've got the, I've got my names mixed up. I do apologise. I was looking down the room and read the wrong councillor Bailey. I do apologise.
That's okay. Thank you. And thank you very much for your report, Nikki. I think it would be really helpful if at some point you could bring a report to the Health Scrutiny Committee. And maybe at the point at which, I don't know what the time scales are for your, your across Devon action plan. Maybe we could have, be involved in that. That would be really helpful. I think it is really concerning the increase in suicide in Devon. We saw the national figures and the figures here. And I understand that there's a lot of complexities and sensitivities. But I wondered if you could give any insight into why you think Devon is, is different from, or what's happening in Devon? or what's happening in Devon. Is it to do with, if you can give any view at all on, on why that might be or if it's just not possible?
How long have you got? No, I, I just, it's, it's so difficult to say it's because of this, it's because of that. It's a much longer conversation, which I am more than happy to have with you another time. But, yeah. Can I just say it's complicated?
Okay.
Yeah, it is really complex.
Thank you. And then just, yeah, also I did note the, which, which has already been discussed, the delays in registration. So that it's a hundred ninety nine days and three hundred, sorry, a hundred ninety nine days in England and three hundred and fifty five days in Devon. And I wondered, and maybe this probably isn't a question for you, Nikki, but have we got any idea of actually when our registrations will be brought in line with what's happening nationally?
Yeah. I, I mean, I just think, I mean, I, I'm awful. I'm one of those people that reads the inquests, you know, in the, in Devon Live and have a bit of an eye on that. But I know that they're, I think they are at full strength now, the coroner's team. And I think they are, because I noticed now there are deaths that have occurred this year that have already been to inquest. I think the thing is they don't necessarily do them in a chronological order, but they are really catching up. But I think I always have to say, you know, as for them as well, that if, if it's a complex death, and I'll use the example of someone dying in a, a place of care or prison. That, that can take years to get to inquest, just because the amount of, you know, the length of the investigation that has to happen. So, you know, I don't think we, you know, might never get to a place where we're kind of in real time because of all those different things. But I think, you know, I, I feel that, that our coroners, you know, our head coroner is working really hard at the moment to try and bring that down.
Thank you. I know there's a question from councillor Julian Brazil.
Yeah, thank you, Jen, and apologies for being late. Just, just going back a bit to the saying the effects that suicides have in schools and it's all very tragic. And you may not be able to answer this. Do, do we know what sort of part social media, smartphones exactly may be playing in that? Because I just say that because there's a live debate going on within councillors in, in, in Devon at the moment about looking to try and support parents if they want to stop their children having smartphones.
I think if you look sort of nationally, I mean, quite famously, there's the Millie Russell, you know, who, fourteen year old that sadly died from suicide. And her father's been very vociferous in, you know, in bringing this to attention. I think it was included in the, you know, the, the bill that went through around, you know, protecting children and everything. So I think it is an issue. It's very hard, I think, when you're investigating your death, because I'm sure people were, it's very hard, even if somebody's dead, to access their social media sites and everything. So I know with some of them, the police have been able to do that. But I think we can assume, you know, it probably does play a part, we just don't know. I think it'll, it's something that's ongoing. But, yeah, I think, you know, the, it's something that's well worth bearing in mind.
Thank you. I actually have one last question, which is suicide prevention. Are the individuals that we find in, that qualify under suicide prevention, are they the, also the same individuals that would be inverted commas frequent flyers at a hospital A and E?
I think there might, you know, there might be a crossover with that. But I think one of the things that we're really keen to emphasise, obviously, if somebody has poor mental health, then, you know, the, the risk of suicide in some of those cases can be elevated. But about sixty five people who end their lives by suicide haven't accessed any mental health services or been to A and E or, you know, even maybe seen their doctor. Some of them, you know, maybe we focus on doctors because they might have seen their doctor in the previous twelve months, but not necessarily about their mental health. And if you think about sadly male suicides as well, that is probably a greater picture. So I think it, yes and no, I think is the answer. I think, yes, that, that could be some of that group. But also, I think where we've, and why we, you know, we work very closely with our colleagues in Devon Partnership Trust, who are really dealing with the treatment side and the crisis care. But that's why we try and get that community message out, because it's about how do we contact those people who might not be going to access support for their mental health, but are in some sort of crisis because, you know, their, their relationship has broken down and it's just created a kind of domino effect of everything else falling apart in their lives.
Thank you very much. What would be great is if when you can find a solution to the impending funding challenge that you have, that you keep us abreast of
Yeah.
what is happening with that
Yes.
crisis, stroke funding.
Yeah.
Because I think it's vital that we don't lose this subject while we're busy trying to develop the overall strategy for Devon Health and Wellbeing and the J S N A. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And with that, we move on to what I think is the, near the last presentation for this, this meeting. An overview of outcomes from Maria Maloney, Lucy. Please go ahead and present.
Lovely. Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen. So just bear me one moment. Okay, brilliant. Okay. So my name is Maria Maloney Alvin. I was Lucy, was married last year. So I need to get that checked or changed, actually. But I'll be presenting the update around the Joint Health Wellbeing Strategy Outcomes Reporting. So I think it's just helpful, just because of some of the conversations we've had as well, just to note Simon's presentation a bit earlier as well. In terms of the Joint Health Wellbeing Strategy Timeline, they touched on the J S N A, J S N A, Joint Strategic Needs Assessment as well. And I thought it was really helpful just highlighting that the focus could be around a smaller number of strategic priorities. That is quite action focused. That's music to my ears in terms of data as well. And I think just to say, or just to consider what might this mean going forward in terms of what I'm going to present today. So it's, it's likely to kind of change as well with the collaboration of the board in terms of what we determine as priorities, what we might prioritise within those priorities and what are the actions and activities. And I think Peter sort of mentioned also around, you know, that strategic response and, and actually how we maybe seek to measure that response or those activities associated with those priorities. And I think, as we also said, there are a variety of structures and organisations and partnerships that will be focused on many of the same priorities as well. So there's an opportunity around how we align and join up and perhaps feed in some of those updates and work as well. So just a little introduction here as well, because I think some people are a little bit new to this. And it's also helpful, I think, in terms of a refresher as well. So the J S N A Joint Strategic Needs Assessment was sort of mentioned. So I thought, let's, let's pop a little definition in here just for the board as well. It is a statutory piece of work on behalf of the Health and Wellbeing Board. Public health intelligence tends to sort of lead that work, but we're, we sort of have a steering group which combines a lot of many different members from across the system, health and social care system and voluntary community sector as well. So the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment, it looks at current and future needs of local populations. And this looks to help to inform our priorities in the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy. The report I'm going to go through today is, we'll show you basically some of the measures that have been updated. So essentially, we've got priorities that are outlined in the Joint Health Wellbeing Strategy. And these are the measures that we look at to assess whether or not we're higher or lower, what the trends look like, et cetera. On a quarterly basis, these updated outcome measures will be presented to the board, which is what I'm doing today. It's recommended that the Health and Wellbeing Board note the updated outcomes report. And it's also just important to mention, I may not have all the answers at my fingertips. And certainly with one screen today, probably won't be quick enough. But if there is anything more specific that the board would like to understand, we can absolutely take that away and consider perhaps even a future agenda item in terms of who's most appropriate to present. I think the other thing as well is how it connects through to Solvay's update earlier, as well as Nikki as well. So both updates relate to indicators that are within the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy Outcome Report today as well. What they would have provided was probably a bit more updated insight. What you'll see in this report is the national sort of published statistics where we can look at how we're doing over time and how we're comparing nationally as well as with other, other areas. So just a couple of other important notes. So when we're looking at the data in terms of Devon, Devon is beautiful. It's also very vast. So some of the headline figures also might mask some of those inequalities as well. So there is local variation there. And it's important that that, you know, potentially presents opportunities for targeted intervention. We will see district level differences as well, and that could highlight where efforts could be focused to improve outcomes. In terms of the trends data, that helps us look at what emerging challenges we might see, persistent issues and areas for improvement. And a really important one, I would say definitely with the indicators that I'll update today, will be around the RAG rating, red, amber, green. So we just need to approach that with caution. Green doesn't necessarily mean that we don't need to do anything and that we're great and we can move on. Actually, it, it more or less sort of reflects how we statistically compare. You know, not necessarily our ambition of where we would want to be, essentially being the best out of a bad bunch. And we may still fall short of what we aspire to do as a system. So again, excess weight is a really good example of that, where we're green for Devon, but actually where two thirds of adults are of excess weight status. So just important to, to mention that. Also, just to say, trends must be viewed in context. So when comparing local data, you know, it's so important to look at regional and national trends. And that kind of helps us reveal whether or not those challenges are unique to Devon or whether or not there are things that we see reflective sort of regionally and nationally. So Nikki touched on some of that within the data around suicide. Data lag is also something that does come up quite a bit as well, that is expected. A lot of these are large scale surveys. The ones I'm going to update on today relate to active lives. So they go through a rigorous sort of validation and delays can be twelve to eighteen months. But the older data still does whole value and it helps us look at long term patterns as well. And a lot of the time, these typically change quite slowly and can help guide some of that strategic planning. And then just finally, public health outcomes are complex. They do require coordinated action across local authorities, NHS voluntary sector and national bodies. And local efforts alone may not be enough to shift strategic outcomes. So a classic example, I guess, would be Nikki talking about some of the work that they're, you know, that they're doing. Is not possibly, you know, enough in terms of shifting overall patterns in terms of suicide. That requires a coordinated effort. And we know that it's very complex as well in terms of factors influencing those unfortunate outcomes. So to update, we've got three indicators. As I mentioned, they're all from the Active Life Survey. Excess weight in adults, five a day fruit and veg consumption for adults and physical activity as well. Just a little bit about Active Life Survey. It's conducted by Sports England, monitors the physical activity, dietary habits and weight status of adults in England. So on our Health and Wellbeing Board website, we have an interactive tool. This is just a, a static visual that I've provided. And within your board papers, there'll be a little bit of a sort of a summary also as well. We've changed it up a little bit as well, tried to sort of take a leaf out of some of the sort of national guidance in terms of storytelling and not being too sort of scientific and sometimes which can be a little bit impenetrable to understand as well. The first indicator that has been updated is adults excess weight, covers the period of twenty three, twenty four. As I mentioned, we're green for Devon, so we're significantly better in comparison to England. But we're still looking at two thirds of the, of the adult population that are of an excess weight status as well. What you can also see is there is some variation across the Devon districts also as well, which is to be expected. They're not all the same in terms of different population structures. Some areas will have higher areas of deprivation and whatnot as well. Also, just important to mention that in terms of the general trend, we're very much in line with the national sort of pattern. And we haven't seen much change over the last few years as well. In terms of fruit and veg consumption, so that covers the period, the same period, twenty three, twenty four as well. So thirty nine point four percent. And we can see that variation across the districts also, again, the same pattern in line with national, you know, we're seeing some slight reductions locally, but not significantly. So again, want to keep an eye on. But I think what's interesting here is that although we're significantly better compared to the England average, as a country, we're sort of well below the target of consuming five a day as well. So I think it's again, setting that into a context that we're performing well. But actually, is that where we would want to be in terms of, in terms of fruit and veg consumption diet? The last one is proportion of physically active adults, covers the same period again, seventy one point one percent. We're better than England in terms of statistical significance. And again, we can sort of see variations there across the districts also. So this is very much those that meet, within this indicator, those that meet that definition, so a hundred and fifty minutes per week as well. And the inverse, so those, that thirty odd percent that's there, that describes those that are not meeting that physical activity definition. So there could be people in there that are fairly active, but not within that definition and those that are not active at all. Again, the pattern in terms of trends is very much in line with what we see nationally, fairly static as well. And I think that's probably it for me. I think probably the other thing just to mention is we, we do know that obviously these are healthy, health related behaviours and there are some of our leading sort of risk factors in terms of contributing to poor health and wellbeing and premature mortality. Also, we're only looking at one side of the coin in terms of geographical. So it's likely that there'll be differences in some of these outcomes amongst some of our other groups as well, areas of higher deprivation, some of our inclusion health groups also. And then just finally, just some useful resources as well. Again, these might be new to, to colleagues and members. But we have a whole host of dashboards and reports. We're in the middle of refreshing our Joint Strategic Needs Assessment and area profilers. So hopefully we'll be able to kind of delve a bit deeper into lower geographies for people to understand some of the variation there as well as other dimensions of inequality groups as well. There's a lot of public health reports, topic overview, suicide was mentioned, there is a topic overview on suicide, which might be interesting to have a look at as well. And we've just published also a ongoing piece of work around digital inclusion, which has just gone up there. And there's a multitude of health needs assessments and our annual public health report from last year that touches on aging well as well. And specific to the, to today's update will be that annual public health report will be really useful to have a look at around health and aging Devon and our behavioural risk factors as well. And I've included the link there and I'm happy to circulate the slides. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Steve, you were first, and then Peter and then Tandra.
Thank you, Maria. Really helpful for updates. Just a couple of observations really. And it's picks on Maria's point about, about green being green. I guess it's green comparing, if you want to compare ourselves with, you know, if you want to compare yourself with a country such as the UK, which has, you know, two thirds of the population are overweight or obese, it's probably not where you want to strive to achieve, is it? So there are other countries in the, in the UK, as are the countries in, in Europe particularly, and elsewhere around the world. He performed much better than us and had much lower levels of people who are overweight or obese. So, so the green bit's really important. I don't know what, what would be better than green, I don't know. But I would aspire not to be green if the target is, is two thirds of the population. Just a couple of points. One is Maria alluded to, we do know the consequences of being physically inactive and being overweight driving premature death and morbidity. And we see in Devon, you know, a rise in type two diabetes and heart disease and cancers, et cetera. Much of that driven by the levels of, of people who have been overweight and obese and inactivity. So the importance of the work is, is crucial. As Maria said, it's, it is complex. If you, as I have done, read the Fit for the Future, the Ten Year Plan, it talks about obesity moonshot opportunities. But it does pay, it is, it's, you know, a number of paragraphs and um opportunities. Um. Um. But it does pay a, it is, it's a, you know, a number of paragraphs and and I think commitments from central government. I've heard some of these before around food labelling, uh a lot of work around um some of the um GLP one drugs and uh the expectation that uh the NHS will provide additional weight loss services and support, et cetera. So so although it's seemingly sort of uh measures around um our um uh five a day consumption, physical inactivity and weight can often seem a bit like, okay, that's just, you know, actually it's really, really important. And I strive to be not green, whatever the colour is, green, white, maybe, where we start to drive down that. And but this is barren adults, but it's a similar picture to children. I know people know this, you know, uh a third of our children leaving primary school are overweight or obese, and that sets them on a a life course uh probably to be continually overweight. So just a, just a point around the importance of it and a point around the commitment around uh the ten year plan. Um. How much of it is achievable? How much is aspirational? I have a personal view around how government have kind of stepped away from things like, you know, the sugar tax levy, which we know dripping down sugary drinks significantly. Uh, uh, and I think more can be done around food labelling. But let's, let's see, I'm a bit optimistic. Let's see what plans come out from central government. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify that the government is not intending to send people with excess weight to the moon, uh just to be clear. Um. But I'm mindful, uh, Chad, to your challenge earlier on about how to bring our secondary care uh colleagues into the debate a bit more. And I, and I, and I'm mindful of the fact that we talked about, about these being markers of prevention. And we've also talked about uh the expense and the consequence of ill health. But I'm not sure that we ever bring that data together in a, in a whole pathway. So do we and do we see uh as a group, the consequence of not eating well and having excess weight? And the spend, the resource that we uh have to provide at the same time as the uh the resource that we spend on prevention or we might spend on prevention, which might give us a much better understanding of where the resource is currently at sat and where our collective ambition might be to shift that resource. Now, I wonder whether that might bring our acute provider colleagues, who are the people who have to deal with the consequence of of the ill health of our communities uh to the table in a different way.
Fantastic observations. Um. From my work, um, I'm quite aware that uh once you're obese, there's a high, you know, related to diabetes, that once you become immobile, then you don't do physical exercise. And as a result, you're more likely to suffer from a comorbidity or mortality in that context. Uh. Speaking of somebody who's only had his one veg today, I'm going to go home and have my next four. Um. I think it's going to be very important that we get the right KPIs into the joint strategy. And I would love to be able to take your expertise and your skill set and find out which are the critical ones. I don't want to measure all a hundred, but I would like to know which four or five we should be really focusing on. And they would be on our little chart that we sort of see how well we're doing. I recognise that there's an eighteen month delay. Uh. So the impacts, for instance, of the injections that everybody or the, 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 the treatment people are getting for being overweight is only come in in the last six to twelve months, in my understanding. So I'd love to see or understand what impact that is happening. And also what cost, at what cost? We still haven't probably um, I know they've gone through regulatory and we will have uh what are the consequences of taking these drugs for any particular period of time? And what is the cost in terms of uh to the NHS, which may be minimal, because I think most of it's private, but I'm not sure. So it would be interesting to find out about those aspects. And I'm, oh, Tandra, sorry.
Yeah, I'm happy. I've got a question and an observation, but you've also got another hand up on the screen. I think you, you might have it on there.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So my observation is, or it's just really a plug, um it's a really good dashboard. So I got distracted and was going through the other indicators. And I know we talked a lot about green and the fact that it's very easy to just say, oh, we don't need to do any more. But if you look at the dashboard, there's a lot of red and amber. So I'm going to put a plug in around the 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 ability, our inability to improve on dementia, uh dementia diagnosis. But obviously, that might tie into the reporting period. So I I don't, they're all slightly different. So you might say there's another reporting period coming up. But I, you know, I've been in Devon, I'll be here three years, and I think I've said the same thing every time we talk about the outcomes report. And we, if we're thinking about prevention and how we help people, and it's about helping people rather than budgets, uh how we make a difference to people's lives, early diagnosis, helping them be able to live their lives better. And then the other thing I noticed is social contentedness. And I think you raised a point, um, Richard, about uh social isolation and unpaid carers. And, you know, if you're a woman over a certain age and you've got caring responsibilities, you're likely to be very unhappy. So um there are things that we probably need to have a discussion about, you know, what we might want to do in that space. My question was going to be though, so we've got all of these indicators and we're refreshing our strategy. So it sort of plays into what you were saying, uh is, are we going to review? Are we thinking about make some, some, some changes?
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. And I think this is um a really exciting time. So I think as we, as we have the sessions with members and we, we sort of on this, um, I suppose, communicate, um, our J S N A and other various resources to establish what the need is, that will help with sort of what, you know, priority setting. And then it's based on the priorities, really. What are we sort of, what is that number of priorities that we want to focus on? And then what does that mean in terms of, you know, what are we trying to achieve? Um. And I think the key thing here for me is, is a lot of, some of these are very conceptual, you know, we, we might have a marginal impact upon. And that can be very difficult to see in those strategic outcome indicators. So I'm happy to be involved. I would have expected to be anyway, but I'm happy to be involved in terms of um how we sort of define that. There's probably something about kind of how we utilise maybe logic model approach, what are the problems that we're trying to solve in in Devon? Um, you know, what's, what are the activities underneath that um that will make a contribution or a difference? And how can we measure some of those? Although we might not be seeing some of the, the shifts within the, the lagged data pub, you know, publicly, um what we will be able to see is, um, you know, some of those kind of changes more locally that we know we're, we're, we're making a difference on, that we will then hopefully start to see come out in the, in the data that's published in the future. So absolutely, of, I have, do have some plans. Um. And um it will be really exciting, I think, as we move forward to develop those with everybody.
Uh. Thank you. councillor Denise Bickley, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry not to be in the room here. Um. I just wanted to come back about the comment about leaving school.
Um. We can't hardly hear you.
Sorry, Dan, my microphone was up. Sorry about that. I was having a cup of tea. I do apologise. That better. Um. I was just coming back and I'm not sure it's the right time to do it. But um as it was mentioned, it was about leaving school, um a third of our school leaders leaving, being obese. Um. And obviously, we have control over school meals in school. Um. And I just wondered if there was any work being done about that and also in hospital meals as well. Um. Uh. So I'm not sure this is the right place for it, but just asking those questions. So, thank you.
Uh. Can anybody answer?
I can't answer the the hospital one, but but um reading the, in the ten year plan, Denise, it did talk about school meals um and the quality of school meals and increasing the quality of the school meals linked to the increase in free school meals as well. So I was really curious. Um, but just because you give them a free school meal, if it's not nutritious and not balanced well, then how good is it going to be? So there was, and I was just trying to frantically find it as you were talking. Um. But um update school food standards. Um. Uh. So I think there is an a pardon upon an appetite to really look at the schools. I think what I've seen in the news um is about the money and the funding available. So I've heard per head of child, uh the, the schools have less and less money and therefore struggle to have the right balanced diet. But but it's certainly in the ten year plan. So I will look with interest to see how that plays out um to make sure they get the nutritious. And also the breakfast clubs as well. The role at the breakfast clubs, it's important what food are served at breakfast clubs as well. So absolutely, I'll be committed to try and do some work in that. I don't know about the hospitals. Um. Maybe Peter, right now.
Can I just quickly come back about the schools? Having just recently worked in a school, um, you know, parents can choose what they want for their child every day. So they might get a free school meal, but they may just choose a jacket potato every day. Or, you know, they may choose all the frozen option, uh the, the fried options on each particular day. Um. And that i- is quite tricky. So I, although they may look at the whole week and see that there's a balanced diet available throughout the week, it doesn't mean they're eating that. So um I don't know what work can be done around that. Thanks.
My only comments about hospital food are, it has been, it has broken many a celebrity chef uh an attempt to improve the quality of, of hospital meals. And I think there are a number of attempts by central governments to regulate. But but my ob- observation about your comment in a way, councillor is, for me, Fit for the Future signals a change in a conversation that we need to have, which is not about relying on on the nanny states to make the food better in hospitals or to make the food better in schools. But it is how do we empower our citizens to make the right choices which are often available? So having spent quite a lot of my life working in hospitals, I will recognise that there is always a large queue uh outside wherever is the weakest link in terms of what will provide the least nutritious and the most calorific food in hospitals, um even though there are others, other things provided. So I think whilst it's really important that we make sure there is a quality of choice, we also have to focus on how we, how we really educate at the very earliest level, how, how we empower people to make the right choice. Because that's where the biggest bang for our buck is going to be, I think.
Thank you. I did actually work at the uh R D U H on an innovation associated with food, hospital food. It was so that staff and patients could choose what they wanted in the morning. It was, it was in, they were informed by the calorific value, how far it had travelled, uh all sorts of aspects. And that then was allowing them to make choices about what they were going to have. Um. It was also mixed with obviously the patient need. Uh. So there are some new innovations out there which allow for effective uh uh choices. And I know that they are trying to procure the right foods and follow the uh national advice.
Any of a mate, Chair, I'm in, in response to that, I would absolutely agree. And I think, again, Fit for the Future signals less, less central dictates and more local autonomy to make, to, to utilise innovation at the local level, which I think would be very welcome.
Um. I noticed that we're at four o'clock and I'm really desperate to try and finish, if we may.
It was just one little point as well, just to say that um there's a couple of research, research, can I get my words out? Studies um that we're involved in as well. Um. One that's led by U C L, um and it's funded by the N I um H R. And that's looking into the impact of the National Childhood Management Programme on children and parents as well. Um. So we're one of, one of the local, six local authorities that are taking part. So I'm sure in the future, when we have some um findings from that study, we can also update. And I think it's very much around sort of communications and whatnot as well. So I just wanted to add that in. Thank you.
Uh. Thank you very much. Um. And that report is to be noted, I believe. Yep. Uh. So we move on quickly, uh the scrutiny work programme to note review work in progress. Um. I don't have anything to speak to on that particular point. And yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um. I welcome this um as it defines specific roles um and remits for the two different committees work. And I'm sure um councillor Jess Bailey will agree with me on that. Thank you.
If that could be circulated or or, because I definitely do not want to duplicate um any efforts whatsoever. So I'm, I'll be really happy to understand where we should, where this board should be focusing. Uh. And I don't want in any way to um uh to interfere or duplicate any activities. And in fact, it would be nice to be able to leverage the work that by the scrutiny group to make sure that we're making the right decisions based upon their conclusions. Okay. Right, I, I will learn that one. Uh, moving on quickly. So we're now moving on. Yeah, thank you. So I pick at that stage, the aim would be to have that um draft Joint Health Wellbeing Strategy for consultation. So kind of focused around those kind of priority areas, ready to go out for the um kind of public um consultation, as it were. Good. That, that would be a real goal to have that here at the, this meeting. Um. And to also very quickly get that workshop in place, uh which would have a knock on consequences if we didn't manage to do that by the end of this month. So I I appreciate that goal. Um. And alongside it, obviously, the implications for financial considerations, we need to go next to the strategy. So an early read on that would be great. Uh, Julian.
Yeah, sorry, Jed, and I don't mean to prolong the meeting at all, but um and maybe I missed it, but I, but um I was particularly interested about the dentistry bit. And I don't know if that's something that's going to be covered at a later date or if it just missed me or you did it earlier. But um, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a massive, massive issue, dentistry for children in Devon and the lack of it.
Um. Peter, would you be able to give um Julian a, an update?
They did cover it. That's fine. That's fine. I, I just, I just think it, you know, just looking at it and the key priorities. And I see that there is a figure there for about, you know, the number, but that's been set by central government. Can we very much make sure that when we, you know, that we have a, a running, you know, how we're doing with those priorities rather than just put them down, leave them, go away, but they're actually have smart targets there that we can see how we're doing, what's working, what isn't, that kind of thing.
Uh. Thank you very much, everybody. Um. I appreciate the, your confidence in me to become Chair. Um. I'm going to do my best. I'm going to work with you all to make sure that we have got something tangible by the next meeting. Um. And I, I appreciate your confidence and thank you for today. Um. I'm happy to receive feedback on what I could do better. So um please side look to me when I'm sort of having a cup of tea and say, hey, Jed, you should do this differently or or perhaps we could consider other items. So please do that. It's been a pleasure. And I look forward to working with you over the next ninety to a hundred days to, to create this new G S N A uh deliverable. Thanks very much. Thank you.